I will call the meeting to order if everyone could please rise for the salute to the flag.
Fledge of Legions, flag, United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, ever-igninging justice.
Welcome, everyone. Just as a note, an executive session was held prior to this evening's meeting for legal reasons. Next on the agenda, opening comments. Commissioner Evans, do we have any opening comments to share?
Thank you, sir. Yes, I've got a couple. Welcome. Glad you could join us this evening. Our meetings are neutral ground, a place to hear and be heard. Just a reminder, your questions or statements regarding agenda items only will be entertained under citizens to be heard. All other matters will be recognized at the end of the meeting during public comment. If you noticed something in the air along Lincoln Highway on Tuesday, it wasn't a flying saucer, a flying pig, or a flying nun. The UFO was actually a drone that came in peace and with purpose. It was here to capture the realities of Lincoln Highway and to aid the township, the zoning task force, and the Lincoln Highway Commission as we create a new vision for our main street. Hey, it was supposed to be today, but tomorrow is opening day for our beloved Phillies and with it, hope springs eternal. But there's another opening day on my calendar, Saturday, April 6th. The COWN Little League kicks back into action with their annual ceremony. It's always a blast, so come out and support our Little League as they set out for another year of championship ball. Jane, did you have something to share real quick?
Sure. We're looking for all our little Easter egg hunters to come out on Saturday on behalf of Park and Recs. It's a free event. We'd like to see everyone come out and support, I believe, the committee, if I'm correct, stuff 2,000? 2,600 eggs, so there's plenty for everyone. And it's for little ones and big ones of all ages. So come on out, you'll be able to take pictures with the Easter Bunny and there'll be some other fun events. So we look forward to seeing you Saturday, Municipal Park, 1 o'clock sharp. Don't dissipate the Easter Bunny.
And on Saturday, this past Saturday, the Chester County Planning Commission hosted their annual luncheon. The focus this year was on America 250 Chesco and their Are You Ready campaign. With success comes expectations, and the success of our 2023 town tour has put us at the head of the class of expectations. A couple of folks in attendance at the luncheon referred to COWN being the Keystone event for 2026. As David Byrne famously asked, "Well, how did I get here?" I'll tell you how we got here. Through the hard work of our historical commissioner, Parks and Rec, OCHS, Public Works, Directors, and all the people who came out because we all believed in COWN and what was possible. I'm sure we'll create an amazing event for the semi-quintcentennial. Hey, did you know that 2026 marks not only the 150th anniversary of the United States, but 2026 also marks 300 years since the old COWN Meeting House was founded? We are indeed the Keystone of Chester County. Four years ago, four years can go by in the blink of an eye, or they can seem to take forever. One thing that's certain in our world of high-speed everything and short attention spans is how quickly we forget. Tonight would be a good time to remember because only four years ago, this board was holding our last in-person meeting as COVID came in and changed the world overnight, killing millions in the world. Our opening comments on Zoom included local and county infection rates, hospitalization rates, and yes, the number of dead. COWN lost its share of residents, neighbors, and friends to COVID. Others endured months-long hospital stays on a ventilator. Our hospitals and healthcare workers were unprepared, understaffed, and overwhelmed by the onslaught of desperately ill people. ERs were set up in parking lots, grocery shelves were empty, many small businesses failed, and teens found themselves without hope. That state of insanity went on for nearly two years. Now, nearly two years removed from the worst pandemic in over 100 years, here we are again, together, in the same room, making plans for our future as if nothing ever happened. But it did. Oh, it did. Never forget and always be thankful for what we've got. Remember, when we all work together, there's nothing we can't do. Spread kindness, everyone. Anger, grudges, and resentment are not worth our time or energy. Compassion, empathy, peace, and love, these are what make the world go round.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. Quick, four years. For those of us who have not had enough coffee, as I heard tomorrow morning, Starbucks is finally opening here in COWN Township. At what, 5:30 in the morning? I'll stroll in around 9 through the drive-thru.
You might get through.
All right, next on the agenda, citizens to be heard for agenda items. Do I have any here in the township? With no hands raised, any in Zoom? None at this time? All right, next on the agenda, Township Solicitor, Ms. Camp, what do we have?
First, we have a conditional use hearing, so this is the conditional use application of Dana Petrizio, P-E-T-R-I-Z-Z-I-O, the owner of the property. She's a principal of the owner of the property at 4,000 Lincoln Highway. The property is actually owned by an entity, DPP 2022 Properties LLC. It's located in the TV1 zoning district. The board granted conditional use approval under Section 155, 26(c)(9) of the zoning ordinance on May 25, 2023 to allow the property to be developed with a restaurant and drive-through service. The applicant petitioned the board to amend Condition Number 5 in the decision in order, which required the applicant to install a sidewalk with brick inlay. So after the conditional use approval in May, applicant came back and got final land development approval. And as part of that approval, consistent with the conditional use order, had to install brick sidewalk. So now she's here requesting that that condition be modified. The board exhibits that I have, the first one is B1, which was a letter from Mr. McKenna, dated March 4, 2024, with the conditional use application. Board Exhibit 2, proof of publication of tonight's hearing on March 13 and March 20, 2024, in the Daily Local News. Board Exhibit 3 is an affidavit of posting. The property was posted on March 7, 2024. And the fourth exhibit is the actual conditional use decision from May 25, 2023. Is there anybody in the audience that owns or leases property in close proximity that wishes to be recognized as a party? Okay, the record should reflect that nobody's requesting party status. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. McKenna, who will explain this very narrow scope for this hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Camp. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I apologize, I'm a little under the weather with the voice, so I'm going to do the best that I can. I am here on behalf of DPP 2022 Properties LLC. You've seen me many times over the last year. It's nice to see everyone again. For the project more commonly known as the Farmhouse Coffee and Espresso Bar, or what I like to say is where Mr. Mullen's going to go in the future instead of Starbucks as soon as we can get open.
There you go.
Unfortunately, my clients couldn't be here this week. As many of you probably know, it's spring break, so they're away with their children. So they have authorized me to be here on their behalf to see them. I have only three exhibits, all of which are already in the possession of the township. I have given them to your solicitor. First being the conditional use application that we filed for this evening. That's A1. A2 is the meeting minutes from when we were here in January, when you were gracious enough to approve final land development, January 25 of 2024. And finally, the conditional use decision that you entered on June 29, 2023. Specifically, we're here following the meeting in January on land development to request a modification to Condition 5 of the original conditional use order. Among other things, that condition required a brick inlay on a portion of the sidewalk. You'll recall that we don't have much sidewalk. What we have is on the west side of the property, leading to the Jeffers site, right at the driveway into the property itself. At the meeting in January, my client had made a plea and had explained to the board why we would like not to install that brick inlay. It seemed supported by the planning commission, the reasons being the cost to install and then the cost to maintain. But there was no mechanism at that time for you to act. You had already given your conditional use. But the board had suggested a change in policy was perhaps warranted during that meeting. We had pointed out that the brick inlay is not an ordinance requirement. There's nothing in zoning or SALDO. It was essentially a board policy, and you had recently done it a little further to the east for a project on Route 30. So based on the conversations that we had that night, the feedback from the board, and frankly, some feedback with the solicitor, we filed a conditional use application, and the board was gracious enough to waive the fee for us to do so, and I thank you again for that, to attempt to come back and amend that condition. What we're seeking is simply to make that portion of the sidewalk concrete. You had amended the condition in January for final land development, essentially to include a brick feature of some kind. And I'm grateful for that as well, but I don't think that really was what anybody was hoping for. So we're here this evening asking if you could modify that condition. The standard that we're held to in this situation is called a change in circumstance. So you are authorized by case law to do so. There's two factors that you look at, again, excuse me, when the owner's looking to modify a condition that's become final, as we are here in this case. The first is where a change in circumstances renders the condition inappropriate, and it has to be also included in absence of injury to the public interest. So the change in circumstance that we're relying on is the change in the board policy. So up until that point, it had seemed to be the board requiring the brick inlay at least along the Route 30 corridor as part of any redevelopment of the properties. The feedback, and the minutes don't go into that much detail, but they're included so that you can see at least what Dana Petrizio had stated as well, suggested that you were willing to reconsider that policy moving forward. I don't know if you've done that since we've been here in January, but that is the basis for our change in circumstance. It's not a change in the property, it's not a change in the law, it's a change seemingly in board policy. Secondly, I don't see any injury to the public interest necessarily in doing so. We had expressed some maintenance concerns with the brick becoming loose, ice, and everything else. So I don't think that just going from a brick inlay to a concrete is against the public interest. It's really more aesthetic, I think, than anything. So I think from a legal standpoint, that we've satisfied the change in circumstance criteria. It's not a terribly burdensome standard. There are cases out there where it's been denied, but I do suggest that were it not for the board's cooperation and willingness to change the policy, we would probably not be here. But the feedback we had received that night suggested that it was willing to reconsider the condition. I don't have anything else to offer you. It's a very narrow issue. Obviously, I'd asked for the admission of the exhibits, A1 through A3. I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Commissioners, any questions?
I have no questions. I just wanted to say that while we are looking into that policy, I don't know that we're putting that aside. Certainly, down the road, because aesthetics are very important to Lincoln Highway. I think that while we're making that consideration, probably be a little more, a better way to put it.
Understood. I appreciate that.
Commissioners, any other comments? None at this time? Residents, any?
Yeah, I mean, there's no parties, so nobody's going to ask. Yeah, so I think you can close the record. And if the board feels comfortable rendering a decision tonight, you can. If you want to take it under advisement, you have to render a decision within 45 days, so up to you. Normally, I would say we don't render them that, you know, in one night. We let you go back and think about and deliberate, but this is such a narrow scope, you may feel appropriate to make a motion tonight.
Yeah, we're not going to drag this out. I think we're ready to make our vote here. So entertain a motion to amend the conditional use application, the original one, to not include the brick inlay.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Young. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. It's lovely to see you again. Go Philz. And with no disrespect, I hope I don't see you for a little bit for this project.
Patrick, I did want to make one comment with you. I know at our last meeting, I brought up the street lamp.
Yes.
Okay, and I did get a chance to drive by over, you had mentioned it was over by Copa 82.
It is on that side of the property, correct.
Right, and it was my fault on this because in my mind, I'm picturing a decorative street light. I got over there, it's a telephone pole, a very old light. So I think in the future, I know we would like to see the decorative lights down that road, and I know we still have another parcel to work with, you know, in the future. So I just want to put that out there.
I appreciate that. I will relay that to the client.
I do appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, here's where our drone footage could...
Yeah, the drone footage is showing. Happy Easter, Patrick. All right, Kristen, next on the...
Second thing is a proposed amendment to Chapter 33 of the COWN Code, which is titled Fire and Emergency Services. So Ray put this together, and I really... Yeah, you're good. Sorry. Ray really put this together and sent it to me and just asked me to put it into an ordinance format. So I'm actually going to turn it over to him to explain the purpose for the changes.
Commissioners, so Chapter 33 previously really was about three paragraphs long, and it hadn't been updated in probably the last 12 years. It still referred to my position as Superintendent of Life Safety. It didn't, it talked about career firefighters, but a very narrow scope. It didn't talk about the fire marshal in any real depth, and it didn't include fire inspector. So this ordinance really just updates the definitions of those positions as we currently operate today. The duties and responsibilities of those positions are really taken directly out of their job description. So a lot of times, we try to track changes in a chapter. If I did that, you wouldn't be able to read it. There'd be so many red marks. So this literally is just describing the programs that we have today to make sure we quantify those and they're recognized.
And it's not for adoption. We haven't advertised this yet. It does require a seven-day advertisement, seven days prior to your hearing. So if you're comfortable or you have any questions on the ordinance, obviously Ray or myself can try to answer them. But if you're comfortable moving forward, it would just be a motion to authorize us to advertise it. And then you guys tell me which meeting you want to do that at, if you're doing it at your second meeting in April. So that'd be fine, but...
Commissioners, any questions on this? Residents here in the township, any questions? No hands raised here in the township, any in Zoom? This time, so we just need entertain a motion to approve the advertise?
Yes.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Taking off. Happy Easter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Abby, can you let Lowell win now?
Yeah, right. All right, the next thing is a consideration of preliminary land development approval for Kia. The applicant is actually DMS Realty LP, care of Jim Spala. The property is at 2751 Lincoln Highway. It is in your TV1 and Lincoln overlay district. I'm going to turn it over to the applicant who's in the audience, right? Joe's here, Joe Rosella's here. Do we have the ability to put a plan up? Okay, so let's do that. And Joe, Lou can maybe go through and explain what's going on.
Good evening. Hi, Mark.
Hello.
Good.
Good evening.
Hi, good to see everybody again. I was thinking back to COVID and terrible time. Terrible time when we were all on TV and going back and forth and learning how to communicate electronically. At first, it was fun. Not fun, but at first it was different. But it was sad at the same time. It's good to be in the same room, to read reactions, and to see people. With that said, good evening. I'm here representing Kia dealership and the property that Jim and his wife have purchased in order to put a Kia leasing dealership on that property. I think you're all familiar with where it is. Jim has already taken steps to take down a very dilapidated and ugly building that was on the property. We'd like to think that this is going to be an upgrade. It will be an upgrade to what I've seen on this section of Lincoln Highway. We have a rendered site plan, and we have an illustrative. Joe, Ray, do you have that in the, whoever's running the machine? Oh, Lowell. Gives a little bit, but that picture's...
I'm sorry, which?
The streetscape, the landscaping plan?
There you go. That's, yeah, that's a very accurate representation of what this property frontage will look like once it's improved. It's a fairly simple land development, from a land development perspective, it's a fairly simple application. This is for preliminary plan. We received the unanimous recommendation from the planning commission. And frankly, I think this will be, go a long way in your efforts, your continuing efforts to beautify Lincoln Highway and to improve Lincoln Highway as it traverses COWN Township. If there are engineering questions, we can certainly, Joe Rosella can walk you through the plan. I don't know if there are engineering questions. We've read the review letters. We spent a lot of time before we've come here polishing this plan. I mean, it was submitted last fall, and we've since that time been responding to township consultant comments. The access, we see no problem with. PennDOT has already done a preliminary review of the application. There's some, you know, HOP technical items that have to be cleaned up as we go forward, but that said, I mean, the matter before you tonight is for recommendation of preliminary plan. We, of course, would be back with the final plan. We've been before the municipal authority, or we've been speaking with the sewer authority about the sewer accommodations here, and that's being worked on. Lines have been televised. So far, knock on aluminum here, wood maybe, things are moving in the right direction. So if there's any questions, I don't want to take too much of your time. If you have site plan questions, we have folks here who can answer that. If you have operational questions, Jim is in the audience. That.
Commissioners, questions?
I was just looking at the plans, and I just want to ask, like, you just have a brick wall around the sign. Is there any way we can have that brick wall extend itself on both sides of the sign so that you don't have pedestrians that could kind of like run directly into the car lot there? Because it's just brick around the sign, but it doesn't like kind of serve as a barrier between...
Yeah, certainly, we were emulating the same condition that Del Toyota has. It's a three-sided brick, we'll call it like a horseshoe-shaped enclosure that has a cast stone cap. And then we'll also have landscaping behind it. So the likelihood of the ability to kind of walk into it, based upon the topography, I think would be really not a likelihood. It's more just to present some kind of aesthetics, to continue that theme that we felt was presented along that section of Lincoln Highway. And certainly that represented something that was already in place. And that's how we arrived at our design.
Yeah, I just think it would just complement, you know, the Lincoln Highway vision that we share. And being as though the cars are already, you know, facing the highway, and you have the sidewalk there, it would just be another buffer. I mean, for me, I'm sure my colleagues probably feel the same way, that it would help with the design plan, that open lot with the cars in the front and not a building.
I certainly think that's something that we could continue to refine for the final, for when we come through for final. At least it's a representation of what we envisioned it to be, so we can expand upon that absolutely.
Thank you.
So you wanted to cross, like a knee wall going across the sidewalk is, like behind the sidewalk?
Yes. That kind of, you know, linked in with the sign itself, and as it takes its horseshoe, then it would just go east and west.
Connected to the sign, but like spreading out.
Spreading out to the exterior, yes. It just adds another buffer to the whole design for me.
Yeah, I think one of our concerns, and I know you guys usually wait till the end, but our concern is we didn't want to see another parking lot of cars. That was our biggest concern. When you, when you guys first approached us, a year, two years ago, I guess it's been a while, the idea that was presented to us was you were going to either renovate or build another building on top of where the US supply was, keeping that, either renting that out and then keeping your shop in the back with the so-called leasing cars, you know, off our main strip. Having another parking lot full of cars, that's what we're trying to stay away from while we're rezoning our township. We're trying to create a new image, so I think... Hey, if you can, just come up to the mic.
That kind of developed, that was the direction we thought about.
Just into the microphone.
That was the direction that we were, you know, thinking about knocking that building down initially, but, you know, we're, I'm an entrepreneur and that site right there, you know, there's an opportunity for leasing. Leasing is really big. And the building that we designed is a good-looking building that's going to sit back off there. I know that's your vision, but that, this site and this business that we're trying to put there will bring good jobs here. The average pay employee that we have at our stores is, you know, $80,000 to $90,000. So that site right there will probably bring another 10 to 15 jobs there at that site, so...
And we appreciate you knocking down that US supply because that's been an eyesore for, as I can remember. So I mean, that is a plus. I think, and I'm just speaking for myself, I know the other commissioners have something to say, but it was the sea of cars we're trying to stay away from. And I think that's where Commissioner Kennedy was coming from, just, you know, if you have a wall of some type that kind of minimize the look.
We could design a wall that would go across the front, you know, like a knee, like a hip wall type.
Yeah, because if you're driving down the road, it's the visual.
But you're going to have a lot of landscaping up front.
No, and I like that, yeah.
You're barely going to see. Plus, with this being here, we have our tractor trailers, be able to drop cars there. They'll be off Lincoln Highway. They'll say just drop wherever they want to drop.
Another question I did have, the lighting for the parking lot. Is this lighting going to stay on like our usual car dealerships? Or since this is a leasing agent, would the lights be off after hours?
We have a lot of theft up and down that road. I just watched the other night where I was watching people walk around our lot, getting the cars, and they damaged a whole bunch of cars. So I think lighting's important. It's going to have light on it, just like any other lot. Where they have the grocery center up the street where the carpet places. We're going to have some light there.
Okay.
It won't be the same as the store, you know what I mean, but we're going to have light to protect our property.
Can I ask how many cars will actually be on that particular parcel?
Could be anywhere from 50 to 100.
And Lowell, could we get the shot back of, yeah, that one there? So that's the parking lot itself. And I know the office area in the back, Ray was kind of giving us an understanding. You have four bays, is it five bays?
Five bays in the back and an office.
And then an office area in the... Yeah.
Okay. Well, we got a glass building. I don't know if you're familiar with the Enterprise down the street on the corner. They have an awesome office in the front. Ours is... On the corner, they have an awesome office in the front. Ours is actually going to be a little bit bigger and then we're gonna have our base next to it. But it's gonna look a lot nicer. It's all glass. It's all, you know, it's gonna be black and silver. Now, the whole project, that's about a three million dollar project to build. Not counting the money that we've already invested.
Yeah, Jim, hey, uh, Mark.
Hey, Mark.
We've, we've met.
Yep.
I, I, I have to say, you know, like my, my, my nieces and nephews refer to me as a cool dude. I see you as a cool dude. You have vision. I mean, that's how you got here. And I appreciate everything that you have done within this township. And your interest in doing more. I, I. One of the, the piece of this that I would have loved for us to have known about earlier, and, and this is something that I mean, I sit through the planning commissions, but I don't say anything in there. As Commissioner Mullin was saying, we're trying to change the vibe. While you're definitely bringing some visible improvements there. What I would have given to have had your beautiful new glass building in that space right along the highway and you're parking behind all the cars back and the bays in the back. Cause now we've got something right on the highway saying, look at me. Look at me. I just invested this much money in this township. I believe in this township. You should too. So I'm really bummed that you're in the back and not all the way up in the front. Cause I mean, it would change a lot of dynamics on Lincoln Highway. That's just, you know, I'm an artist. I have different visions of things.
You know, who knows what's uh, coming down the road, you know, and there's property that comes available. You know what I mean? So there's property connected to that property. And who knows what we can do going down the road. We've been here for twenty years in the community.
Yeah.
Support tons of stuff in the community. We're all about where we live at. And we support, you know, schools to lots of different organizations that we handle and support. We're here making a commitment and investing a lot of money here. Any more questions?
I would just say that I, you know, I echo my colleagues' comments. The, the look on the front um, with the sidewalk, you know, those are all pluses. You know, getting people off the highway, walking is, is definitely a plus. Different look than that steep bank and, you know, uh, down to that raggedy old building is definitely a better look than, than what we have currently. You know, I, I, we took car dealerships out of the TV one district because we didn't want seas of parking lots of cars. And unfortunately, that's what this project is. And uh, staff has informed us that, you know, that leasing is, is allowed in the TV one district. So, you know, um, not exactly what I wanted to see, but you know, there are some pluses.
Things Jim didn't say is that he did make an effort, probably for about a year and a half to have, remember our original plan was to subdivide this property and have like a retail building, maybe more towards the front. Zero retail interest for all the reasons you've heard. Retail, if anybody can figure out where retail bricks and mortar is going, they're gonna be a genius. But that's why this has been delayed for so long. There was just zero interest in, in the property by any retailer. So that's what caused this flip in the plan. So one of the things, you just heard Jim allude to it. He is looking at, if there is an assemblage, and maybe when you rezone, maybe he could be part of this rezoning conversation. It's easy to change the site, uh, maybe accommodate what you're talking about down the road, no pun intended. There is land around the property. We know what you don't want to see. But right now, the market is, there was no other use. Tried office, tried professional services. Marketed to retailers, small retailers, large retailers. No interest. And maybe that changes in a year or two. But right now, parking cars, releasing inventory and doing this plan is the best he can come up with. It wasn't a knee jerk reaction. It was marketed aggressively for about, for probably about eighteen months before he figured this. We're just chasing our tail.
Plus we're sitting.
The, uh, the bays, the five bays there for the car washing?
Yeah, for prepping, for prep, washing the car back and the car out. They're all glass doors, speed doors. It's, you know, it's really a sharp building.
Recycling the water?
Yep, recycling. It's all recycled. Goes into a tank and that gets pumped out. A thousand or two thousand tanks that come out. Plus all the sewer that we're moving over, doing all the work for that.
While we're discussing it, refer to the overall landscape plan. I, I think what you're seeing is really the, you know, the view of, of the naked plan in two D perspective with just parking and islands, but the actual landscape, and we've, we've gone to extreme measures to, to put as much landscaping. Refer to that Lowell, if you have the ability to go to the, the, the plan to add fencing. A, as you saw, the enhanced streetscape along Lincoln Highway, but along the perimeter and all the islands we've, and, and along the buffering between us and the riparian buffer against uh, the creek back there. Put as much landscaping, we've actually exceeded the municipal requirements to create something that would really soften the effect. And again, to the configuration of the lot with the other two uses, the Mexican restaurant and the dentist office. Tucks a lot of the parking and some of the sea of parking that you referred to, you know, it's really obscured by the other streetscape. So I think in terms of blending it all together, we kind of, we, we, it's not just like what you would see in a larger scale retail environment. So it is, it is a unique lot and I think we've taken every measure to soften and present something that complements the site. Work for.
So, so you do have um, trees and whatnot in the parking lot itself and, in those uh.
In the islands, yes.
In the islands?
Yeah, and, and there's a lot of landscaping up front.
And on the sides?
A lot of shade trees a, and we lengthen the throat of the driveway so that the parking that's along the street isn't just come off the Route thirty and then bam, there's, there's asphalt. There, there's a lot of amenities in the terms of shade trees, deciduous and evergreen trees that again, in conjunction with Commissioner Kennedy's comments with the wall, I, I think will really be buffering, uh, you know, the, a, a fact as you're driving down. Right? And, and we do have, you know, a limited exposure on thirty. It's, it's a very narrow streetscape, so.
I, I do agree with that. Not like the four dealership, that, you know, that whole corner and all you see are, are cars. The fact that, you know, you do have some planting trees. Now, now the little picture off to the right here, the trees are what, fifteen, twenty feet tall? Is, is that what we're expecting in the future?
So initial planting height is twelve to fifteen and then they will continue to mature. The idea is, you know, with any site, you want everything to mature, grow consistently. So it, it, it's all uniform. And that's the presentation that we'll have in, in two years. You'll see some really nice foliage there.
How many parking spots are there actually there?
I, I think in a total, we're, we're just somewhere around two hundred.
So you're gonna leave a hundred parking spaces vacant? So will any car from the Kia dealership be parked on this lot? Well, then that's not leasing.
Well, there could be inventory there that I can get inventory from that lot. There's not, there's not gonna be any cars sold there. Cars will be leased. And, and the cars that'll be there will be available for lease. That doesn't mean somebody, I can't sell a car or retail. And okay, I got that car down there.
Because I, I just, I disagree that if that car is on that lot, it should be for lease only.
It is, but if I need that car, if I sell it, you know, we've had this conversation with the planning commission, so.
Okay, how does that work with our codes?
I mean, there's a condition that's worded in there. Applicant will utilize the property for automobile leasing in accordance with section one fifty-five, twenty-six, B twelve zoning ordinance, which permits this use by right in the TV one district. New and used vehicles that are available for lease will be brought to the property prepared for lease by removing protective materials utilized for shipping, washed and detailed as needed, and parked on the property as part of leasing inventory. Vehicles will be available for short-term and long-term leasing. Leasing transactions will occur on the property. Those interested in vehicle sales will be directed to conduct business on the Kia of Coatesville dealership at twenty-five thirty-five East Lincoln Highway where automobile sales is permitted. Vehicle inventory that's available for both lease and sale may be parked on the property. Vehicle inventory that is only available for sale will not be parked on the property. I mean, unfortunately, your definition of leasing, this means that, so we're stuck with that. Joe, what is the date of the landscaping plan that you had up there? Is it February twenty, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four? Is there a more recent landscape plan?
Well, the landscape plan that we use as an exhibit that, that accentuates the landscaping along Route thirty was added after the fact.
What's it dated? Okay, so if the board were to grant approval, they may want to condition it upon, this is the landscaping plan. Cause the landscaping plan that's referenced in the motion is dated February thirteenth. This is a more, a more updated buffer. And then can you pull up the other one that shows the streetscape? I'd like to make reference to that as well. The streetscape plan is, and what's that dated and what's it titled?
That's the same. This is called a streetscape plan.
It's dated March twenty-seventh?
That's correct. Now, the only thing that this doesn't have is the additional wall.
Right.
Commissioner Kennedy asked about, it does show the brick piers and.
Right, but I would want the board, if they were gonna consider approving this, um, three conditions apart tonight is one is that they implement the streetscape plan dated March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, but to be revised to add some sort of wall, brick wall that extends from the, uh, extends from the sign, the details of that wall to be approved by the board during final land development. That the applicant will implement the landscaping plan dated March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four as that plan gets further refined during final land development approval. I guess those are two conditions.
I think we also have some concerns about the lighting plans. What does that look like or what does our code require for lighting in the parking areas?
The, the lighting plan, uh, Commissioner Young represented about the hours of operation. The lighting plan itself is compliant in, in so much that it doesn't spill light over. It contains all the light within the property and there's no spillover. There, there, through final, we could discuss some notation and about hours and what is deemed to be security lighting versus lighting that needs to be remained on all the time. That's not an uncommon way for us to handle lighting. Certainly again, securities being an issue, uh, and it's not uncommon. Some of the lights remain lit, but not all of them. But the lighting plan that we have does not have any lighting that is uh, flood lighting or it's all light controlled. It's uh, LED lighting. It's all, uh, no glare. So it's certainly consistent, different than some of the other dealerships that tend to have more projected lighting.
Some of that newer LED stuff is, just spills downward. It doesn't spill outward.
That's correct.
And I've seen newer, more retro uh, lighting that looks really nice. And I agree that if you're gonna have this lot, you know, with the theft of catalytic converters and everything else, you gotta have some type of lighting on there.
And also the um, we're, we're, we're very concerned about safety on Lincoln Highway. And this is in one of the areas where we have more accidents is because it's not well lit. And the whole part of the foundation of Vision Zero is getting proper lighting in proper places. So I'm, I'm not as, in this particular spot, I'm not as concerned about spillover lighting uh, as I normally would be because it could be to an advantage along Lincoln Highway.
But would we have the decorative street lamps?
Yeah, there were two on there, I think.
There is, okay.
You know, depicted on the plan, you can see the triangular shaped dark rings. That reflects the ornamental lighting. The more broader rectangular lighting that's more evenly distributed is the internal lighting that's just would be there. So yeah, we are definitely getting a safety factor on the street.
Okay.
Make the sidewalk safe. And as you know, as you go to the west, we lose the sidewalk and we have that condition of the other adjoining shopping center, but certainly this will provide the security and pedestrian friendliness and safety that we want to represent.
I'm gonna probably say it wrong because my mind is just getting old.
We're here for it.
What is it? La Herrera? What is the next one?
Casa Herrera.
Casa Herrera. Love that place. I don't recall. Do they have a sidewalk that you can connect to or are you just, that's the uh.
No, they don't.
There's a break in the driveways there. Yeah.
We're, we're providing it to the extent of the property.
Much appreciated.
Yeah.
Here, here's my goofy, I have a goofy uh, ad if possible. I have a note in here from uh, when I was going to the planning commissions. I think you've got about two hundred and forty parking spaces there. And you're anticipating using fifty to a hundred to, to begin and, you know, potentially for a while. Can we put something in there that only the new inventory that's being parked at that lot be in the front? And the, anything that's older inventory be in the back? Yes, as long as we can get, because I know that, I, I, I think with Del Toyota, there was some promise made on that.
And it's starting to look like a used car lot.
Cars in front of it now, so that would be, yeah.
Please, with the mics on, our folks in Zoom.
I drive the Estelle every day and that's where they, they put all their used cars that they train.
Yeah.
They have hundreds of them. Yeah, but that's no problem to put them across. We'll have all new up front and anything old would be actually behind the dentist office and the Mexican restaurant. You can't see it.
That would just leads to another question. Leasing a vehicle, I mean, how old would they be? Three to five years old?
Three to five, maybe, you know.
We're never.
Older, you can go older, but we're not gonna go that old. It'll, it's mostly gonna be new. Some used car leasing, you know what?
Did we have a hand raised? Oh. Just out of the corner of my eye.
So I had presented a motion um, that would grant preliminary approval based on the plan set of April seventh, twenty twenty-three, last revised February thirteenth, subject to compliance with the outstanding review letters from Arrow dated February sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. Gilmore Associates dated February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, and Penone Associates letter of March fourth, twenty twenty-four. Um, it does consider granting two waivers, actually it's three waivers, one thirty-five dash three oh five A and three oh six A to allow the applicant to install a PVC lined underground stormwater facility. And then one thirty-five dash three eleven C to allow an applicant to use stormwater pipes at a slope of less than one percent. Um, the other conditions, I read the one relating to the use, um, that would be, that it must be used exclusively for automobile leasing. And then the other ones are, like I just said, compliance with the outstanding review letters, um, obtaining the approval from the CTMA for public sewer, paying a payment of three thousand eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty cents for a fee in lieu of open space. And then the other ones are just your standard execute the development agreement, financial security agreement and post financial security. From the last time I spoke about adding. From the last time I spoke about adding conditions, there are some additional ones. So the one would be implement the landscaping plan dated March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four as that plan is further refined in final land development. Implement the streetscape plan dated March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four with the addition of a knee or hip wall made of brick that extends from the sign. Those details to be determined during final land development. The third is cooperate and work with the board during final land development to determine how the lighting can be minimized to a certain extent to really be primarily security lighting. And sort of identify those. And then the fourth is agree to only park new inventory in the front and keep the used cars more to the rear of the lot. So those would be the added conditions that I've heard the board express tonight.
I did, I still would love to see that building moved up to the front. I know, but it, I just think it's such a... How much could that cost to just put it in the front instead of where it is?
If, if it was a, an office looking building, I think that's the right way to go. If it's, if it's car washing stations.
Yeah, I don't want them up front.
Yeah, I, I don't think that would look good up front.
The glass building is what.
But that's where the car wash is.
That's where the, behind it.
No, it's, it's in the building.
It's the same building?
Yes. Yeah, so it's like the office.
Yeah, the office area was like thousand square feet, fifteen hundred square feet.
Right over to the, the bays.
It, it wasn't, it wasn't that large. Majority, yeah, you got five bays and a thousand square foot office.
And it's in flat plain.
So, but you, you're doing the best you can with this piece of, of land. Uh, Jim, I, I do want to say we really appreciate everything that you do here in the township. So, so, uh, you know, our pushback is only because we are looking at what we would like to see our, our streetscape look like as you're driving down a road. That's it. Yeah. And the fact that you'll have new cars kind of up front, I think that is a plus. But I think the landscaping and the, the brick wall kind of answers a lot of our concerns. And I appreciate you working with us on that.
Kia of Thorndale, oh, that's right. Called that.
Thorndale.
What is it called?
Kia of Coatsville.
Oh.
Kia of Thorndale has such a nicer ring while we're trying to promote Thorndale.
Kia of Callan. Yeah.
Same here, all right.
So if somebody's comfortable with the way I've described the motion, I would need somebody to move that.
Described, do I have a motion? So move?
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Kennedy?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Was that a no?
That's a no.
Okay. Passes four to one. All right, thank you, Jim. Good to see you.
Denise, I'll revise this before I could sign. Thank you. Thank you, thanks for coming. And I don't have anything further, so I think I will be heading home, so.
No, no, you don't want, you thought it was an office.
Well, it's just a little office.
But if they have trees and whatnot, the block then.
Trees and flowers and lights.
You look taller in, uh, real life here, by the way. You know, Zoom, you look shorter. Take care. Thank you. Kristen, thank you.
All right, Kristen, thank you, Kristen.
Have a good Easter. Happy Easter. All right. Time to take a break? And moving right along, uh, next on the agenda, Township Manager.
Good evening, Commissioners, thank you. Uh, I have, uh, several items for your consideration this evening. Uh, the first predates my time with the Township, from what I understand from staff. It's, uh, exciting to see it on the agenda. Uh, this is the honorary street name applications. We received two recently. Uh, they are included in your packet. They are for locations on, uh, Brooks Lane and Foundry and Carver's Court. Um, the individuals nominated for designation uh, have contributed to the community quite a bit during their time with, uh, in, in Callan. And, um, this program, as mine, as I understand it, involves placing on the street uh, designation, the names of these individuals. And I think if there's anyone on the board that I know there's individuals who really champion this initiative and, and, uh, brought this to fruition. And, uh, if anyone would care to address these individuals in more detail.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes. The first candidate was, um, Mrs. Thelma Vaughn, um, whom I did have a privilege of knowing briefly, um. And she was a ball fire. Um, from what I can remember, um, even before I moved into Carver's Court myself, uh, she was a leader there. And she took a lot of, uh, her own personal resources and time and energy to police Callan Township. And she worked very close with our department here. Whenever there was a complaint, an issue, a concern for any of the residents. Um, so for many people, I mean, this development is, I think it's now close to eighty-five years old. Way ahead of my time. And, uh, yeah, almost as old as Commissioner Evans there. And, you know, she organized a lot of projects and she assisted with senior projects and family recreation and, and in that period of time when she was, you know, uh, they called her the mayor there. And apparently, um, she knew the ins and outs of the community and knew everyone. And it was a period of time when she lived there, people didn't have to lock their doors. And everybody had that, like, open heart, open home type of theme. And, and it just was a beautiful place. And if you know anything about the, uh, history of, uh, Carver's Court and how it was founded and developed, uh, pioneers much like Mrs. Thelma Vaughn and also Bishop Eggleston, I'll just do it collectively, you know, would probably be some of our forerunners. You know, and for that development to still withstand today, um, if they were alive and could see, you know, some of the impact that they have on what it looks like to live there today. I, I'm sure they would just be astonished because it's, it's a beautiful place and time. And, you know, with the history of it and the significance of it, you know, as far as back as the early forties. Um, just a beautiful place and time, raising families, the farms, the, the, the things they did for and with children. It, there was always a, a community center there. They always had gardenings, they had annual pig roasts and just so many beautiful stories and a lot of original families, four generations still today. And even Mrs. Vaughn leaves behind a legacy there as well as Bishop Eggleston. Uh, his family still lives there and there are probably about four or five generations of their families and the influence that they had on that community. So I, I initially it was about Ms. Vaughn, but as the word got around and got spread and I was like, what about Bishop? I'm like, what about bring Bishop on too? So, so that's how that became, um, you know, collectively, the community would like to commemorate and honor them collectively. Thank you.
Very nice. I also, uh, had the privilege to meet, uh, Bishop Eggleston a few times. Um, and, uh, back in the day when this was brought to us before, um, myself and, uh, the manager at the time, uh, came up with the idea of naming Eggleston Boulevard, which is over, uh, at, um, by the train station. So, um, I, I had the privilege, uh, at one of the, uh, services to, to, uh, for Bishop Eggleston to, uh, announce that we were naming that street for him and brought the street sign with me.
Wow.
So, um, you know, the, these are definitely well-earned honorary names. And so what, above the street sign are we putting, just in, like in the, doing the city of Philadelphia honorary?
It doesn't change the street or the address or, that was a concern, yeah. And, and, and we understand the impact that would have on families and mortgages and banks. So that, that does not interfere with anybody's change of address at all. Um, so again, I just think it's a nice way with it being on the national registry, uh, the development as it is and to continue to keep, you know, their, their visions as visionaries alive. And, you know, to give honor where honors due. And it will live forever along with the, uh, the significance and the historical impact that this community's had on our families. Thank you.
Commissioners, any comments on this? I'll reach out to the residents. Comments, questions, uh, from the residents here in the Township Building? None at this time? Any in Zoom?
I'll be honest with you, I thought that we had done this.
Oh, we didn't.
I, I remember when the conversation started and it was such a great idea. I, I say, let's get this done.
It's compliments, everything else that they, uh, the board and the community and the families and the establishment here in Callan has done, you know, for, uh, including the historical society. I mean, the time that they even put in to support the research and all the paperwork and the many, many, many hours that went into getting it on the National Registry of Historical Places. And that will live forever.
Happy. Where would the signs go? When, one is, uh, one is on Foundry and the other is, are, are we doing, is that Brook?
I don't have the map in front of me, but yeah, Brook goes off to the side, right?
Of that little lane.
Okay, Brook Lane?
Yes.
Okay. And that would be for Thelma?
Yes. And Bishop Eggleston would be coming on to Foundry, you know, right at the opening.
Right at the entrance?
At the entrance.
Beautiful.
Oh, that's going to be nice.
And they're excited about it because whenever we can decide a, a good time to do it, the community would like to come together and just commemorate this and celebrate it. And her family now lives in Texas, so, um, have to give them due time. So I don't know how long it takes to actually get the signs, but we were looking at sometime in July if that was possible.
Believe me, they make that work. Will they be a different color?
I was going to do the opposite of the existing street signs. That's what I'm seeing other places. So it would be green on white instead of white or.
Yeah.
The colors.
Yeah, okay, perfect.
Says it'll be a week.
Okay.
So July would be significant time, plenty of time to plan something, yeah. Thank you.
Commissioners, uh, entertain a motion to approve both of them.
Both of them.
The move?
Second.
Move by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion's good, five zero.
Thank you, everyone.
Signs made up.
We will get them ordered immediately and, uh, looking forward to an exciting celebration.
That would be nice.
Yeah.
In their place.
It would be nice.
Oh, yeah.
The next item on the agenda for this evening is change order to a PSA regarding Beaver Creek Trail, segment number five. Um, this is a project that has been ongoing for some time. Um, about a month ago, we met with representatives from DC and Art Department Conservation Natural Resources to explore grant funding for this project. And we were advised larger, the largest portion of this, uh, project will come in the form of construction grants. Uh, there are construction grants available. However, we were advised for the township to take steps to advance the project to the point where it's eligible for that construction funding. Uh, the deadline to apply specifically targeting the C two P two, the Conservation, Conservation Partnership Program, uh, Grant Fund, uh, would be around this time next year, which would be ample time to advance the project to the point where it would be eligible, uh, to receive funding. Uh, the, the segment five, as the commissioners are well aware, uh, would be in the vicinity of the Dog Park and the primary connection for access to the park. Uh, we would also, um, improve stormwater at that location. Had quite a bit of stormwater runoff, um, impacting the property and, uh, going towards the creek. Uh, this project, once completed, would significantly improve conditions at the site. I believe we do have our engineer from Gilmore, um, on, on Zoom this evening. And if there's any technical questions that are above my expertise, um, I believe he's available to answer those.
Commissioners, comments?
We, we saw this, uh, presented not that long ago, didn't we?
Yeah. And we're taking this from the Open Space Fund, right? Which is funded by developers.
Right. Excellent.
Good plug. And if Ross is online, I, I always love to hear from Ross no matter what.
Can I throw something in here real quick? I am here, uh, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, Ross, welcome.
Thank you, yes. Yes, I'm here if you have any, uh, technical questions that I can answer for you.
We don't have any technical questions. Yeah, we're just pretty excited about this little, uh, venture. Uh, Commissioner Evans does have something to read.
Just a, just a couple of things here. Benefits of trails, including, uh...
Stop looking at Tony when you say.
Providing. Provide health and wellness, economic revitalization, environmental transportation options, and improved quality of life and heritage preservation and community identity benefits. Trails and greenways are often seen narrowly when it comes to their benefits. People tend to focus on just the recreational and environmental, failing to see the big picture. The total package of benefits that a trail or greenway can provide to communities, including health, economic, transport benefits, and even the effect on community pride and identity. Essentially, I could go on for the next four pages saying how this draws people from other towns, which makes people who want to invest in restaurants, cafes, small businesses to go, hmm, maybe I should put my, my money over there where the people are starting to go. And then that starts drawing more people, which brings in more business. And we have better funding for Coatsville schools. We have safer community. And everyone's happy. And Tony is the healthiest man alive.
Dream on, Tony.
I would say one thing, um, uh, about trails, and I'll, I'll give you this anecdote. So, um, uh, I've run seventy-eight different races, ranging from five K to a half marathon. Uh, and during COVID, everything moved virtual. Um, there was nowhere here for me to run that safely because our trails, uh, unfortunately, the path is not the smoothest path. So I would drive to Exton, uh, and when running for Broad Street or getting ready for Broad Street as I am this year, uh, I drive to Exton Park and I run from Exton Park to the Target in, uh, Malvern, um, and back. And that's ten miles.
All right.
Um, and, uh, when I'm done, I go to either the Wawa or some coffee place in Exton because I need something afterwards, uh, to, uh, refuel myself. So, uh, to Mark's point, uh, if we have trails that end or come close to our business district, it does lend itself to where people will come and visit and, and spend money and, and sustain our businesses. So, um, you know, it, it is something real. And after COVID, a lot of these races never came back to in person. They're virtual. Um, you can sign up for anything online and, and they'll mail you a medal, a bib and a T-shirt. And you just go out and run it and you tell them how fast you did it.
Yeah, okay.
Hopefully, most people are honest, but, um, you know, I, I use the Exton to Malvern path very often. And it's, the Chester Valley Trail there is smooth, it's flat, it's, it's open, um, and you feel safe on it.
And Ross, uh, for a technical question, uh, what's the length of this, uh, section here? Because it's coming past the Dog Park. Does it cross over Lloyd Avenue and how, no? It just stops at the Dog Park?
Yes, this segment is, uh, coming from essentially the, where it crosses the creek and connecting over to the existing Lloyd Park. So I think it's roughly three quarters of a mile. And then adding the next future segment would give another mile. And, and then there's, uh, a lot more potential to interconnect it with what's already running along Geo Carlson Boulevard. So with, within a few, this type of project, we could then develop a pretty long, uh, trail connection system.
Okay. And, and this part of the trail, is it connecting to anything over in Downingtown?
The sidewalks.
The sidewalks?
Yeah, so it, it'll come out by that monitoring station. The township owns that drive, basically, that goes down to Aston in Downingtown. And then Downingtown is responsible for picking up the next segment of trail. And they do already have the easements for that, so I think they're planning on it eventually, but we're gonna get the ball rolling.
Yeah. Pretty exciting. Even Tony's excited about it. Seeing back there? Ross, anything else you want to add to it?
I think it pretty well covers it. Nothing else specific.
Your voice sounds so relaxed. Are you out relaxing?
I am very, I am very relaxed on vacation right now. Yes.
We really appreciate you zooming in during your vacation.
Yeah, my pleasure.
There's no other questions? Do we have a hand raised or just, okay. Tony, come on up.
Got his jogger on, he's ready to go.
Sari O two five one, Loomis Avenue. You really feel that a walking trail is gonna make Callan great? Do you feel that, Lorraine? Think about it. What made Downingtown great? A walking trail or the schools?
Combination of things.
Well, you. Combination, any of yous?
Yeah, look at the Struble Trail. I mean, people drive there in droves to go to the Struble Trail.
But Downingtown got great from the schools, not Coatsville. You're spending money on a walking trail.
Well, first of all, there's no taxpayer money, there's no taxpayer money being spent on this. On this section.
On this section's grant, I understand.
No, it's funded by developers.
Okay, that's right, you said that. Sorry. You did say it. But what made Downingtown great? Schools. They're building more schools. They have the STEM school. Coatsville got lockdowns, lockdowns. My granddaughter goes there. She tells me when they have lockdowns.
What made Downingtown great for a while was that they had a vision that they had to keep changing from what they were. And expanding in the right ways. Right now, we're living in a township who just didn't have a vision for a very long time, which is why our taxes keep going up, because we're not attracting new people.
Businesses.
To pay more taxes. We're not drawing in the businesses. And then all of that improves the value of your property and keeps your taxes down because then the money is there to pay for all of the infrastructure repairs rather than raising the taxes every year on you and me. The other benefit to having good businesses coming in and more families is you have more funding for the school district. So you can start making the repairs necessary in that school district. That's all.
People aren't coming here because of the school district.
They're not coming here mainly because they don't have any benefits. They can come here and if they don't like that school district, they can send their child for nothing to a charter school. Now, it costs our school district.
Just as bad.
A lot of money to send that kid to a charter school, but that's not what's stopping the people. What's stopping is there's no amenities in this township. It's spread out like this and there's no heart of the, of Callan. There's no heart there. So we need to think much bigger than how do we keep this and make our schools a little better? We gotta think, how do we make this township amazing? And this is one of the little pieces that all adds up to it, and you'll be a big part of it. You will be out there.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Tony.
Make 'em want.
Thank you, Tony. All right, we do have an action item. If there's no more, no more in Zoom, no more comments? Entertain a motion to authorize Township Manager to sign the Beaver Creek Trail segment.
So moved.
Second.
So moved. Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Good, five zero. Ross, thank you so much.
New.
For taking your time out of your vacation, go and enjoy the mountains.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, and I was gonna stick around. I think there's one more item that relates to us.
Okay. And Abby, thank you so much for.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
These trails and parks and everything else that you do for our township.
And medals.
So big. So much.
Two point three?
Two point three.
Thank you.
Geo Carlson Boulevard retaining wall.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. This is a project that has been identified for several years. Forward. It is highly technical and I thank you, Ross, for staying on and taking time away from your vacation. It's, this replacement is stormwater management improvement and will prevent the collapse of retaining wall along that roadway. Obviously, if it fails, that would be very costly getting in front of it. It's been identified. It's always best case scenario. If there are any technical questions, again, I'll refer to the experts.
Throw that wall.
Yeah, we gotta do this.
Yeah, we do.
We don't have a control of what it would be.
Now, this was temporarily repaired. What, a year ago or so?
My understanding is that it was temporary repair to it. This would be moving forward for, make sure that's a permanent fix.
Commissioners, any questions for Ross? Is it Ross that's, he's dealing with this one as well?
Yeah, we, we had Ross do the emergency repair under a PSA and then we asked him to do a further evaluation for the long-term fix. And this is the PSA to move forward with that. He presented a couple of options to staff and the manager, and we agreed on a particular option. And this PSA kind of covers that from soup to nuts.
Okay.
Let me turn this on. Quick question. The estimated professional fees for the scope of the delineated above is $71,470. Is that once this project is bid or where's the discrepancy in that, that $40,000?
Ross, you wanna, you wanna answer it? I can answer, but you wanna answer?
I can definitely answer that. If you could just give me a little bit more information. I think if I remember correctly, our total fee was around $70,000 for the design bidding and construction administration.
Yeah, Commissioner, if you look on page three, it's six, number two. It gives a little bit of a breakdown. So the retaining wall drawings, designs and calculations not to exceed $15,000. Civil engineering easement permitting not to exceed $18,400. Cost estimate specification manual bidding services $5,700 and construction observation documentation estimated at $32,370.
My question, the, the motion is for $32,000.
Is this for design?
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Is that just for the design?
Oh.
That's just for the design.
Good catch.
So the motion should be then $71,470.
That's correct.
They get in total.
That's, that was what I was confused about.
I'm sorry about that. I did not see that.
$71,000.
Very good catch.
No other questions, Commissioners? Not, any questions from residents? None here in the township building? Any in Zoom? Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Evans. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion's good, five zero. All right, Ross, you can get back to breathing that fresh air.
All right, thank you very much and have a great evening, everyone.
All right, happy Easter.
Bye-bye.
What do we have last? Two point four?
Yes, last item I have this evening, this, this is regarding, last meeting, we announced that we were successful in obtaining the $75,000 grant from ECD utilizing ARPA funding. This was, took some time, the start date of that contract because of getting some of the federal paperwork in order was March 1st. And due to the contract time period using ARPA funding, the federal funds, the deadline used the funds was, is December 31st of this year. At the last meeting, thought we had a little time that was, that was, unfortunately, I thought the market supply chain issues had improved. Since that meeting, police chief had explored options for vehicles purchased using the grant funds. And we were unfortunately told that the turnaround time upon placing an order, we placed it today, we can anticipate receiving the vehicle in approximately September.
Wow.
Now, we may get it sooner, may get it a little later. The primary driver, and I know the chief is on, was unable to be here, was on Zoom, and can address any of those conversations as well, but several of the vehicles have been removed from Coatsars, which then limited the available supply that police departments are, obviously, municipalities are going after. With that in mind, and due to the fact the closeout of this grant is, the deadline is December 31st, and I'm, we can request an extension of that, but I would prefer we can order these vehicles, utilize the grant funds and rather than wait and risk the potential for the grant, not the contract period to not be extended. So this, this is a request to move forward with the ordering of a 2025 Ford Explorer and a 2024 Ford Maverick. This would be covered with the exception of approximately $2,000 totality, but covered under the grant funds.
It's a 2025 Ford Explorer that'll be ready in September?
Yeah, so I, most car manufacturers, starting about June, July, go to the next model year.
Commissioners, any questions? It'll cover the cost of both vehicles?
Minus 2465.
$2,400.
That's it? Okay. Which is a down payment?
Yeah.
All right, no questions from Commissioners? Any questions from residents? None at this time here in the township building? Any in Zoom? None at this time?
No.
Entertain a motion to approve. And signed documents. Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Good, run with it.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. Much appreciated.
All right, next on the agenda, Board Minutes to Approve. We have March 14th. Minutes? Scribbled notes. Commissioners, any questions? additions, corrections?
No.
I didn't see any.
I think I was okay. All right, all in favor? Say aye.
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 Wait, do we have a motion?
I need a motion. Yeah, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Kennedy, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Minutes have been approved. Acknowledgement of the Planning Commission minutes. Hey, we have three sets to read. Catching up. December 19th, 2023, January 22nd, 2024, February 20th, 2024. Any comments? Not, entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Motion's good, five zero. All three have been accepted. Resolutions. Don, what do we have here?
We have three resolutions for the Board consideration. The first is resolutions supporting April 2024 as Pennsylvania State Digging Month. Resolution 2024-06.
This is just stating this is digging month for Pennsylvania?
I believe this came through, I think PSAP sent out a request asking for municipalities to support acknowledge state digging with construction spring weather coming. Folks are going out and doing home improvements. It's important to be aware of what utilities are buried before you start digging. So it's an awareness resolution that we can post on the website and hopefully helps.
Commissioners, any comments on this? I think it's important. Residents? What do you have an idea on digging in their backyard without notifying anyone?
Especially on the streets.
Come to the, come to the sewer meeting, you'll find out what happens. You don't check. And you dig.
Yep, before you dig.
All right, none, none in Zoom world? Entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2024-06.
So moved.
Moved?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Kennedy, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Motion's good, five zero. Next one? Territories. Who wants to take this, Ray?
Sure. As you know, every year, the, each municipality does a resolution designating response territories for emergency services in the township. This is, there's really no change to this since last year. It basically states that Thorndale Volunteer Fire Company will provide fire protection to the township, entire township. Minkwiss Fire Company EMS Division will provide ambulance service covering the entirety of Callan Township for both ALS and BLS. Thorndale Volunteer Fire Company will be the rescue service. The Police Department will provide police protection. I will be appointed the Emergency Management Coordinator. The Police Chief, Fire Chief of Thorndale Volunteer Fire Company and myself, or my position Director Building and Life Safety, will be the contact people between emergency services and the township.
Commissioners, any questions? Residents, any questions? None at this time? Entertain a motion to table? Ooh, ooh, I'm sorry, is that?
Whoa.
Too soon.
We'll table it for the next 12 months.
Sorry, I just, I could not resist that one. Busting myself up. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved. Moved by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Evans. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, Ray. All right, last one?
Believe Mr. Stackhouse provided a little extra on that.
Sure, sure. So much like the ordinance that you approved to advertise, you know, our new program that includes the paid firefighters, the fire marshal, the fire inspector, really the section in the employee handbook, section 25, it used to be titled firefighter and it had about two paragraphs. This really cleans that up. It specifically talks about the working hours of firefighters. It talks about overtime. It talks about seniority, holiday pay, uniforms and training and education. If you would look at, you know, the sections in the CBA for the Police Department, you would see similar language. Obviously firefighters, the fire marshals and fire inspectors work different hours than quote unquote normal township employee or, you know, somebody covered in a Teamsters. And really, right now, we have nothing to protect the township or those employees.
Commissioners, any comments, questions on this?
Oh, I think it's great. I think updating as much as we can.
It was two segments, the firefighters and then the fire marshals and fire inspectors?
Yes, sir, it's correct.
Pretty much same information, same benefits?
Yes.
No questions from Commissioners?
Nope.
No.
Pretty clean cut. Any questions from residents? None here in the township building? Any in Zoom? Entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2024-08, updating the Personnel and Administrative Policies and Procedure Manual.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Kennedy, with a close third, Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Good, five zero. Very long, Finance Department. Lisa, do we have any, any updates, any exciting news?
It's very quiet February, as it should be. We are still.
Um, we are still in a healthy mode, um cash balance wise, so that's always good to see. We're about sixteen percent um collected and about sixteen percent with expenditures via the twenty twenty-four budget. So we're right on track for everything. It's a quiet February. Uh, I hope I just didn't jinx that going into March. Everything seems to be smooth right now. So we're just, we're gearing up um for receipts from the tax bills, trash and sewer, and we're looking good with that. We should be getting in uh hopefully about sixty to seventy percent uh the first week or two of April from all of our escrow accounts, from CoreLogic, et cetera. Uh, so that's always exciting to see the girls uh in the front. Really look forward to, to seeing that and uh I think they, they go back and forth. It's, it's my turn to tell her what we're at. So uh that's always the fun part of the job, uh counting the beans. So we're in good position there. Um, that's all I have moving forward for, for February.
Commissioners, any questions on the financial report?
It's a really good place.
Yes.
Thank you. What a good place.
Uh, check approval. We have a uh check run fifty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty-one to fifty-one thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight. Manual check of the number three zero one. Any questions or comments on the check run?
No.
If not, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved? Moved by Commissioner Tindaro, second by Commissioner Evans. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Checks have been approved. Green potatoes. All right, monthly directors report. We'll start off with the building and life safety.
Yeah, somehow I got moved to the top of the list, and I think it's only because it starts with a B. So you should have my report. I won't get too much in detail. I'll go over a couple highlights, uh, commercial projects. Um, the daycare that was approved for use on Zen Road, that was the old Brandyline Cardiology, they actually have a demo permit, they're working, so they're they're demoing the inside of that, so that's finally moving forward. Um, Zen Road used to be a dentist office uh right next door to that. Um, the actual, I think it's Chester County Dental Arts on Lincoln Highway, they purchased that property.
Did they?
Yeah, they have a demo permit and they're moving forward with that renovation as well.
I knew, I knew he wanted to move.
Yeah.
Yeah, wow.
He had, from the day he received a UNO, he wanted to expand, so uh when this came up, he jumped on it right away.
That's great.
He owns the building on uh Lincoln Highway, right?
Yes.
He got alerted for it.
Yep.
So that's gonna be available, right?
I, I don't know. He hasn't really told us that he's getting rid of that, but I would assume because the building on Zen Ri- Road is huge. So, but.
He did a lot to that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Your Kentucky friend.
As you guys probably already know, I think we discussed your pole days up and running and doing good. Starbucks had a soft opening uh today, actually. Yeah, I was, and I only know that because I seen people coming in and out of it, so um but I guess they, you know, you heard that they have a, a grand opening, I guess, tomorrow.
Mm-hmm.
Um. The Ducklings Early Learning Center, they're finally open for business and, you know, doing well.
They got ducklings in there.
Yeah. Little duck.
Little duck.
No, I called them little ducklings, right? Ducklings Early Learning Center. Um, we continue to work with uh through some of our emergency management projects in Stormida. I haven't heard anything from FEMA in a while, so I'm gonna take that as a positive, actually. Uh, we'll see where that goes. Uh, the career firefighter program's working great. Uh, filling the shifts, uh working on the civil service rules. Um, I did ask uh Christian Camp's office to take a look at some drafts that I had. Uh, so hopefully we'll bring those rules back to the board uh for approval after we get a nod from the Civil Services Commission. Uh, we need that to take the next step, which would be to advertise and do a testing process. Again, that process would be very similar with the police do today. So it's a bit of a drawn-out process, but uh hopefully we'll get that started and be able to hire the two full-timers we have budgeted, you know, um maybe by the third, you know, end of the third quarter. Uh, a lot of the fire marshals and inspectors are taking certification classes, so it's a busy time. And we've started our commercial fire inspection uh push, uh and that's moving right along.
Mr. Stackhouse, thank you so much. Any questions for Ray?
Yeah, I'd like to ask, um who's responsible for actually going into like housing developments to doing, you know, just a thorough inspection of like conditions?
So that would be, you know, I have a, a full-time fire, uh assistant fire marshal and two fire inspectors. Uh, and they, you know, between the three of those, they canvass, you know, between the complaints that we get, we prioritize those, then we canvass the township uh by neighborhood when, when they have, uh, you know, when they have time to do that.
So if you have a complaint of a, of a neighbor that has furniture that's been in the backyard of their property for the last year?
Yep.
And you're gonna tell me that nobody's seen it except myself and maybe one other resident?
No, what I would tell you is, just as an example, this month, we issued forty-seven notices of violation. Thirty-four of them were completed, meaning closed out. Thirteen of them are open, which means they're either at notice of violation, citation, or waiting for a court date.
So somebody does physically, you know, look for these things?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
We, we had a hundred and twenty-four enforcement activities in thirty days, so, and that's, that's pretty much every month. I, I don't, I don't often report on that because I'm, I don't like to sound like we're proud of that because I wish we didn't have to do that.
Yeah.
Um, but they, they're, it's a very active, they're very active every month.
That's good to know.
Um, just the other thing, and because we get this kind of uh question all the time. When we find a violation, no matter what it is, unless it's like a very serious life safety violation, uh, the code requires that we give them thirty days to, to try to fix the problem. Then after that thirty days, then we issue a citation. Then we're kinda at the mercy of the district justice. It could take a month, it could take two months before they either take, you know, issue the, the, they'll issue the citation right away, but if the person doesn't reply, to issue a bench warrant could take another thirty days. So unfortunately, a lot of times it may seem like i- it's not going anywhere, but it's in the process somewhere.
I had a resident that complained that a dog was urinating on the telephone pole?
Yep.
You heard about that?
Yep, unfortunately.
So in real time, does he own that strip of grass, which I thought was the right of way to the utility companies?
Well.
He said he owns it.
Yeah, well, keep in, so keep in mind that a, a right of way is just means it's a right of way.
Right.
That means whoever owns the parcel still owns the property.
But he doesn't own the property. He rents the property, but he now owns that strip of ground there.
Ma, I don't know if that's the case. Whoever owns the parcel probably owns the strip of ground.
Or responsible for it at least.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
He, he told the lady that he owns it and, and her dog couldn't release itself on the telephone pole.
Yep.
So you know about that?
Unfortunately.
Okay. That was the one for the record.
Oh, I, I could curl your hair with some of the.
Poor dog can't release itself.
Ray, I just wanted to share um colonial Hyundai. Having cars unloading in the middle of Lincoln Highway, and uh they weren't very well illuminated last week. It was coming home. It was raining, I'm not sure. It was coming home from here from something, and there's that big old tractor trailer sitting in the middle. And what the heck are they doing there? That looks like a major construction. That doesn't look to me like a minor little redo for EVs. That looks like a rebuild.
Well, i- it's not minor for EVs. They, they did land development. I mean, they have an addition on the side. In addition, reconstruction of the front.
Okay, all right.
As, as far as the tractor and trailer, unfortunately, I know the chief's kind of away, but he's on here. Unfortunately, the tractor and trailer in the in the roadway is an ongoing issue, and that unfortunately is a police issue, but yeah, I know it's a problem.
Yeah, it's, well, I mean, it, it, it's just, it's just amazing how you, you know, some, people are told you can't do that, and then they're like, do it. Uh, last thing. Ducklings is open, that's great. Traffic's gonna start to get bigger there in the fall when schools are open again. Probably, might be a good time to do that secondary traffic study.
Yep, it's on our tickler for sure.
Summer is not the time.
Yeah, right. Now, we'll make sure that it gets done when it's actually active.
Thank you so much, sir.
Sure.
Thank you, Ray. Yes. Okay. Yeah, let's go, well, it, it might be pertaining to Ray, so usually I wait till the end, but let's go for it.
Hello, everybody. Mark Young, twenty-beeble Run Road. Ray, this is, I, I, I think I already know the answer to this one, but I'm not ever gonna be happy about it. Um, we had a neighbor move in a couple years ago, and Halloween, he put up about a fifteen-to-twenty-foot skeleton in his front yard. And the skit, think he's blowing over, he puts it back up again, I think he's gonna keep it up year-round, but I, I don't imagine that it violates anything unless you can tell me otherwise.
Probably just the neighbor's taste, but no, I don't think it's a code violation.
I know, but it's just so tacky.
Sorry, sorry about that.
No, I understand. I knew the answer, but I just had to ask.
Yeah, do they put a Santa Claus hat on?
Yeah. Put a Santa.
And that, it's all about Halloween. I don't know what the deal is with the big skeleton. I mean, literally, it's fallen over a few times, the heads come off, they put the head on the bench, you know? Luckily, it's on the other side a little bit down, so shouldn't affect my uh, my property, but I just had to ask, but I had to go on that topic.
Sorry about that, no.
For the dog park.
Thanks for sharing. All right, no other comments? We can move on to Ingleside Golf Course. Nicole, welcome.
Hi, Nicole.
Nicole.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi.
Before you start, I want to tell you that uh at one of uh the commissions I sit on, somebody approached me and said that they live near Ingleside, and one of their neighbors who lives right on, you know, right up against Ingleside. They come to her and said, wow, they're really doing some stuff over there. It's really clear that things are improving, so.
Well, thank you. That's good to hear. We are very busy. Yes. Scattered pretty wide across the property. Um, February allowed us to do a lot of that because, well, we didn't have much golf, probably six hundred and twenty-five-ish rounds of golf. Um, historically, that's probably a decent February, uh with a week of snow cover and, and rain and, and uh when we are wet, we can't have carts allowed, so typically no one wants to play. Have invested in, in pool carts, and we're trying to push the idea of walking the golf course, and it's working well so far. Uh, it's doing very well. But due to that lack of golf and lack of um, you know, people interfering with our projects, we got to finish them. Um, several projects were finished across the golf course, and now we're finally mowing. So the mowing season has started, uh, which takes up most of our time. The staff is working very hard. Trying to get the golf course just ready for the season. Um, we're anticipating a lot of golf, so um as good as the golf course can be, uh, we'll get it there probably in the next month or so, uh, between fertilizing and mowing. Our membership seems to uh notice as well, uh, they're sticking around from last year, and we're actually gaining more. Um, so that's a testament to, to JT and the pro shop. Um, he helps push for, for members and um and our staff is, uh, works really hard for marketing and, and uh maintaining the equipment and the new carts. Uh, everything still looks great. Nothing's run down yet. So we're good. That's where we stand right now. Moving forward, uh, we are ready for s- step two of the irrigation upgrades. Um, since my very first day at Ingleside Golf Club, irrigation has been the headache. And uh it's taken up, it takes up a lot of man-hours and prevents us from actually making improvements aesthetically to the golf course. The underground pipes, the computer systems are all failing. Last year, we were able to replace the computer system to automate the irrigation system. It works great. It's awesome. Um, but the next step is the computer system communicating to the controllers in the field. Um, so replacing those controllers this year, um, there's six of them. We don't actually have to do anything. The company comes in, install, removes the old controller, installs a new controller, uh, and then we take it from there. It's all the electrical components of each individual sprinkler. There's about two hundred and fifty-ish sprinklers on the golf course. Um, I can count pretty easily how many work. So we got, we gotta, we gotta get the controllers next, and then following that, the next steps are, are, are pipes and uh individual sprinklers replaced with a newer, more efficient model. So this, these controllers actually will allow us to have more control. There won't be sprinklers going off in wet areas. Uh, we won't have sprinklers running during the rain. Um, it, it'll, it'll keep us, you know, no water waste. Everything will be efficient and smooth. Um, and water will happen overnight so that I can come in in the morning and work on something else. And uh, and there is plenty to do, so I'm never gonna run out of things to improve on the golf course. That project, the, the irrigation improvements are budgeted. We're planning on just phases of, of improvements uh for the irrigation system, and this is a big one, so. We have a, a, our first event of the year, golf event, is April eighth. Uh, it is a uh tournament, a golf tournament at the golf course that will culminate with a gathering on the putting green for the solar eclipse.
Ooh. Oh, wow. Under the stars.
So we're excited about that. Um, it's, it was actually a member that suggested we do something like that, and, and we, we took it and ran with it, so um, we invite everyone to come play. Uh, it's not just for members, it's for the township, it's for the employees of the township, it's for everybody. Um, it should be a cool event. Um, I will send details. Details will come.
What, what time?
It will be a nine-thirty tournament.
AM?
AM, that will finish that, that will.
Making sure everyone do it. They all showed up nine-thirty.
At night. Balls all over the place.
It'll happen at nine-thirty in the morning, which means it'll finish between one-thirty and two, which is when the eclipse happens. Um, everyone will be on the putting green.
Not in the dark.
Having a putting contest during uh, during the eclipse. That'll be neat. Um, speaking of that, you know, we're in, you know, JT and I, our, our, our head golf professional are coordinating all our youth clinics for this year, um, potentially a summer camp, uh hopefully lots of outings, and then also trying to get some uh township events uh at the golf course. Utilizing our pavilion uh that kinda just sits there. So uh, you know, these are all the things we're working on. We're, we're spread thin, but we're getting it done. Um, and now we're mowing, and uh hopefully the weather's good in the next two months, and we'll really start building, building our revenue.
Who's operating that seventeen-foot lawn machine?
It's, it's, it's eleven feet, and it's uh.
Eleven?
It's phenomenal, uh, growing.
It's growing. I just added an extension on that.
Yeah, it's eleven feet wide, and it, it is one of the few pieces of equipment we have that is functioning well. Um, uh, it's great. It's great. It really does uh speed things up for us. Another thing that allows us to focus on other things. Which is, you know, there's plenty to do, so I, you know, we're mowing eighty inches at a time. It drives me crazy.
That's great.
And any comments on the uh, the sign, on, on the bypass? I mean, I, I saw it every single day.
The billboard has gotten a lot of attention.
Good.
Um, a lot of people, we haven't been able to gauge whether or not any new golfers are coming in because of it. Uh, but our current golfers and our members and stuff, they've all noticed it. Uh, they love the logo, they love uh, they love everything about it. Um, and I know, I think it's a, it's a great opportunity to showcase that this town has a golf course. So next year, we're hoping it's on the other side.
Yeah.
Um, and uh, it'll run for a month in the spring, and try to direct people our way.
It's gonna end in a few days, correct? It started March first.
It started on the fourth, I believe.
Oh, fourth, okay.
Um, so I think, you know, another week or so.
We can put that, we put that on our township.
We put that on our township website as well.
Did anybody get a picture of it?
On our township website, that advertisement?
Yeah, do you?
I think people have been trying.
Do you have my time, you get?
Yeah, don't hurt yourself.
You'd kill out there trying to take a picture. Flat out.
Enough, enough accidents on the bypass, right, Patrick? Wouldn't want to try to take a picture while you're driving.
Can we get a screenshot of the picture, anything that we could put on our website?
I can absolutely send you, send you the mockup.
We can put it on our, put it on the website.
Had that, but in, in action.
But still, everybody can, doesn't see it that way.
I think you'd have to park at the storage unit and walk over there.
Oh. The picture, yeah. The drone has it.
It's, it's getting late now.
Yeah, we're starting.
Commissioners, any other comments? Nicole, you're doing an incredible job. Your whole team.
They are amazing. They really are.
And it, and it's good to see the folks. When we show up for our, our monthly meeting, uh, they're in great spirits. Uh, our staff there.
Nice.
It, it looks like they enjoy the job. They love being there.
We have fun.
Yeah.
We have fun and we've got lofty goals, but, um, they're excited about it. They're, they're really excited about the, uh, lack of status quo anymore. Kind of a push for, you know, improvement.
It shows. It shows. Thank you.
No problem.
All right.
Thanks, Nicole.
And next on the agenda, minquist fire company. Get an update on this.
Minquist.
Taking off?
All right, Adam.
Enjoy.
Good weekend.
Good evening.
Good evening.
For the month of February, we had a total of a hundred eighty calls in the township. Sixty-one ALS and a hundred nineteen DLS. Total calls for the year, three hundred seventeen. Uh, call, top call types, BLS sick person, ALS heart problem, BLS fall, ALS respiratory, uh, BLS injured person, ALS. Total minquist, total minquist calls for the month. Uh, transport outcomes, seventy-seven to Chester County, forty-two to Paola, three to Chopin, pressure, one to St. Christopher's and one to Kingsville Hospital. Our, uh, total outcomes being sixty-four transported DLS, sixty-two treated transported ALS, sixteen treated and refused, twelve no services, three public assists, one refused care and then one DLA with resuscitation.
Commissioners, any questions? How staffing? Are your folks holding up?
Yeah, we had a, uh, had a staff appreciation dinner last month. Um, we brought us cover companies and, uh, gave our folks the night off for their, their hard work. Um, I figured maybe they donated by some local businesses, so.
Nice. That's good. That's good to hear. Sometimes they just need a night off just to relax.
Yep, absolutely.
Well worth it. Thank you so much. Next, uh, police chief. Know he was online a moment ago.
There he is. Hello, from, uh, North Carolina.
Oh, oh, you're rubbing it in? Mountains or the beach?
Um, Charlotte.
Okay, in the middle. That works.
Right now, it's not much warmer here than it is up there, so not too much to be envious of. Um, I really don't have a lot. Uh, we had a coffee with a cop today at Kelly's, um, which was well-intended and a lot of good feedback and we hope to do more of those, uh, down the road. Um, the manager did a good job explaining the, uh, sixty-five thousand dollar grant and the vehicle situation, so I don't, I don't think I need to go into any more detail about that unless you have questions. And if you don't, I just want to take a minute to wish everyone a happy and a safe Easter weekend.
Thank you, chief.
Same to you.
I don't think we have any, uh, questions, no. Well, enjoy your time down in Charlotte. I'm, I'm envious. I'm just North Carolina.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything, chief.
Yep.
Seriously.
All right.
Thank you.
Take care. All right, next, uh, Public Works. Turning off the mic?
Turning it on.
Turning it on. Um, what we got going on? Um, Municipal Park Pavilion that, um, the grill in Pavilion One was taken out and, uh, roof is patched up as of, uh, a couple of days ago. Uh, same for, uh, Dawkins Park, um, new roof put on, all done, look good. Just sad that we gotta keep the vandals out of there because they spray painted under the new, uh, the concrete, so we're trying to get it off and, uh, we failed at that today, so. We gotta find some more, uh, other solution to, uh, get the spray paint off. So if you hear about somebody complaining about the spray paint, that's what happened today. So, but the roof looked good and it's all done and taken care of. Um, for the road maintenance, um, you know, it's just tree trimming stuff, um, pothole repair and, um, street signs and stuff like that. Um, we did a little bit of stormwater work over in Beaver Run with an inlet that was, uh, collapsing, so we went there and took care of that, so. Waiting for the asphalt plant to open up and, um, we had blacktopped that and that should be good for the residents over there, because that was a hazard of someone falling in. So that was a major thing we tried to take care of early. Um, something that's upcoming, just to, you know, put in your ear, that Glen Ridge Drive. Hopefully I get that, I got the pipe, if you guys didn't notice, all the pipe down in the yard for Glen Ridge Drive, for the stormwater, uh, project down there. So I'm waiting for, um, pre-cast inlets that we're gonna be installing. So it's gonna be four new inlets that we're gonna be putting in that, uh, development down there. So that's gonna be a good springtime project. Um, that's pretty much what I got going on. Everything else is just, you know, leaf turning and, um, things that's going on with Green Street. Just waiting for all that stuff to kick off.
And how about the, the street sweeping? Have we started that?
Street sweeping is going well.
Yeah, okay.
Um, no complaints. Everybody seemed to be, you know, wind is coming around and, you know, drivers saying all the vehicles removed thanks to Abby posting that for me. And, um, yeah, everything's going well with it.
Here.
Can I ask what PennDOT was doing under the Eleventh Avenue Bridge there last week or maybe earlier this week?
They were marking. I know, I'm not sure what they were marking up there, but they got some road marks up there. I'm not quite sure what's going on.
I don't know what they were doing. I, I thought they were trying to remediate the flooding. I, I guess that's never gonna go away.
No.
Never gonna go away.
Yeah, I did see road markings up there, but I'm not sure what they put up there, what they're going, plans are going with that. And the signs, it will, just to say, come back to the signs, it'll only take a week to get those signs up there for golf course. So.
Well.
Once I get the colors, give me the colors, everything, I call the guy and I get them made up, so.
Abby, you chose the colors you wanted?
Yes. We want to change-
You wanna flip it?
Flip it and make it something that stands out.
I like that, I like that.
So, um, uh, Adam had texted me before he left, the, in the city of Philadelphia for the, the, um, memorial ones, they do a little Liberty Bell next to that. Is it possible to do the seal?
Like the Allen Seal? That would be nice.
I can, I can-
Yeah, yeah, you can do anything.
He's pretty good. He can, he has all the machinery where he can laser cut stuff and all that stuff up there, so.
Then it kind of doesn't look like it's like so much the street either, you know, like it looks like a memorial.
Stand out a little bit.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, good idea.
Have you seen the ones that they put on for, over near the egg auction? They have one there from the span, if you're out that way.
Yeah.
Take a look at that one.
Okay. Yeah, I can take it. If I look, go out there and look at it, take a picture and give it to him.
Just, that's just an idea.
Yeah, all right. And we have, last but not least, the lawn. So if you took a look at that, um, HH, HHF Lawn Care, um, the only ones that came and provided us with their, uh, bid and everything was, uh, seventy thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars for twenty-eight cuts and township property. So it's a little climb for last year.
It used to be about thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah, it used to be, yeah.
That's ridiculous.
Eleven from last year, isn't it?
Yep, so it did go up.
That's a lot.
Yeah.
A lot of money.
Should we extend the bill?
Don, you wanna chime in on?
Yeah.
And this was the only bid we received, uh, last year, looking back, uh, there were two bids received. A low bid was, uh, fifty-nine thousand and change. The next bid, it appears, was one hundred and thirty-two thousand. So as soon as we can jump, uh, this does represent an increase. At, at a certain point, um, if the board would prefer, we can always look to see, um, just from a cost-saving standpoint, what would be more cost-effective, contracting this service out or bringing it back in, in-house? I think we're getting to that point where hiring additional public work staff to take on this work might actually save, uh, some money in the long run. Of course, there would be an increase, uh, upfront capital expense, purchasing the equipment, uh, new mower first year, but over a, a three, five, ten year, um, period, we, we can run those numbers and see what that estimate would look like.
We should before we make a decision.
We can talk about this during the, the budget process.
What actually might save us money is if we do the Amtrak right-of-way and bid the rest of it. Because that, I think that's the biggest hurdle to people bidding on this, is the requirements that Amtrak puts on, on these contractors. So I, I don't know if maybe that's something that we should look at, is just us doing the Amtrak right-of-way and then bidding the rest of it.
That is a, that is a significant expense of the sixteen locations identified in the bill. That was one of the most expensive, uh, seven thousand for that one component. And we can certainly factor that in, given, uh, you know, what the estimate cost would increase based on this bid compared to last year. And do a, you know, run those numbers to see what it would look like over a, a three, five, ten year period and see when it might be approximately, when, when would that cost benefit analysis shift that we'd actually be saving funds in the long run, uh, to do it in-house versus contract out? So we can, we can factor it into the model.
How long is the contract period? Is it from like one year? Great forward-thinking, Don. And, uh, great thinking, Josh, really. Finding ways to-
Save money.
Save money and be, and be more efficient, you know, I mean. It wouldn't hurt to have another public works, full-timer, you know? They wouldn't be cutting that lawn all the time. You're talking about why they made these. A lot of projects to do here, but, you know, and, but Josh's idea is great as well to, uh, take that Amtrak part.
Add a column in the model and include that as a, yeah. And I do want to, this was a collaborative, looking at this, looking at the increased finance director and Director Huggins, of course, so. Talking about looking at the numbers and running those costs to, it was very beneficial to discuss this and work through it.
Fun. Guys are all great. It's a year contract, but generally they're cutting or servicing these areas between what, like April through what, November? October?
Well, and it is per, so if it rains an entire week and they don't cut it, that, we don't pay for that week.
Right.
So, or, or remember last year in May, it was so dry that you didn't cut, uh, for three weeks, so it is per week. Um, and per cut, so, uh, if they don't, if they don't end up cutting it that week, then we don't pay for it.
Just a, an obvious question. If it's already bid separately for that Amtrak section, do we necessarily need to include that in? Do we have certified folks in Public Works that could cut this?
Not at this moment, no.
Okay.
We don't even have the, the mowers anymore.
The equipment.
Yeah.
Yeah, they don't.
Just something to add to that, and, and just because the manager wasn't here, when we had, I mean, you might remember when we had budget discussions, we talked about that this may be a possibility. Uh, two things we did look into is how to get certified by Amtrak to do it. And, and I did provide that to, to John. It's not a, it's not a hugely cumbersome process. Um, but for some of these commercial contractors, it probably is just an annoyance. So they're charging us more just to, because they have to mobilize. You know what I mean? They can't just drive, but, you know, they just can't ride the mowers on the streets up there, so, um, and, and, uh, John did also look at what the cost of a mower to be able to perform that specific mowing, so he, he already has some of that information for, you know, for when you start talking about it, you know, when it comes to that.
Okay, so nothing can be, I guess, done at this point?
Correct.
No.
Okay, but as far as, uh, awarding this, I mean, this is our only option?
Yep.
Okay, and then we have a year to figure it out?
Yep.
Less than a year, okay. Commissioner, is there any other comments on this? Residents? You're in the township building? At this time? Any in Zoom? No hands raised? Entertained a motion to award, uh, Exhibit B for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five season property main, maintenance to HHF Lawn Care.
Moved.
Moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Evans. All in favor? Say aye.
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 It's good, five-zero. He's always been faithful. I mean, he's always been there for us.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So, you know, and I do realize costs go up. Eleven thousand was kind of a, a jump.
Yeah.
But maybe he bought a new, uh, tractor, who knows? It's got a radio in it or something. All right, um-
Maybe needs new shoes.
All right, seven-point-six. I like these. Seven-point-six. Thorndale Volunteer Fire Company. Patrick?
I owe you a check, Patrick.
I didn't forget. I just wasn't gonna say anything.
I should just put it in the mail. I keep forgetting to bring it.
Uh, good evening. Uh, not much in the way of the report. I do apologize. It looks like when I converted to the Adobe PDF, there was formatting errors and words got combined, so I definitely apologize for that. Um, not much to bring. Obviously, we're, we're busy as well. Um, as alluded to earlier, the, the career firefighters and, uh, program's going ex, you know, extraordinarily well. So we're, we're very happy to be, uh, teaming up together and training together and things like that, so. Really look forward to that continuing and building that relationship. Um, the only other thing that I have is, uh, thank you to everybody for signing up for the blood drive. I know when I checked earlier in the week, we were only down to like two, two of forty-four slots. Um, I haven't checked within the last day or so, but, um, so I really appreciate everybody signing up for, for a great cause. But that's kind of all I have, unless anybody has any questions. Keep it short and sweet.
Nothing. Lots of thanks.
Yes, thank you.
Patrick. For that section, additional business. Any at this time? Denise has her hand raised. Did you see that? Yeah, Denise has some business. None at this time. Uh, public comment?
Should've said one thing. A reminder for everyone out there, the, you know, our incredible staff gets tomorrow off, so township building will be closed. So don't come to do any business tomorrow. Except for the golf course. Do enjoy. You, you're an incredible group, so thank you.
All right, public comment at this time? Yes. Come on up to the mic. Uh, just name and address, please.
He couldn't wait to bring those balls up. Uh, Talisha and Malik Feenster, we're at thirty-two oh one Edge Lane, right on the corner of Bailey and Edge.
Okay.
And we have golf courses.
Oh, okay.
And that's really not even, I want to say, not even a quarter of them.
Right.
So, you know, we're at the corner of Bailey and Edge and the golf balls really have been, well, it started in COVID. We bought our house in eighteen. And if you know where we live on that corner, our house was a disaster. And so we did so much to that house just to beautify the outside. It is really nice. If you see before and after pictures, you would think it's a different house. Um, but it's just been like pummeled by golf balls. And it's, it's a safety issue, so my- And it's it's a safety issue. So my husband had a bum, has a bum knee. He hates me telling his business. He always says hip hop. But, you know, sometimes he really has to like hop into the house so he won't get hit.
Hmm.
And so when we bought the house, we really didn't notice that the balls were coming our way. But we did have trees there. You, the whole front was all trees. We cut them all down because they were awful. They were dying. They were all of that. Um spent about thirty grand cutting down trees. And so we just want something done, if possible. Uh we looked up, I looked up um just, you know, basic responsibilities of a township on golf courses. And it really does speak to, you know, making sure the citizens are safe and all of that. So I basically have three questions. So the first one is, um who is responsible for any damage? We've had, we have house damage. We just bought a new roof that was forty thousand dollars. It's getting pummeled by by uh golf balls. The windshield's had been broken.
Oh my god.
Dents and car, dents and dings in cars. Um so first, who's responsible for that? When we, we've contacted the township and we've contacted the golf course. They said that the the culprits are the golfers. Well, how are we supposed to catch them? You know, we're supposed to wait. I mean, my dog does bark when the golf balls hit the house, which also drives us crazy. And we kind of ran outside, but you can't do anything about it. By the time we get over there, they're off to the next wherever and, oh, we haven't seen anything. We, yeah, pretty much.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So what I read is that one of the responsibilities really is to have a security system so that you know that citizens and everyone around the golf course is safe. So if you did have a security system, that would allow for us to then get the culprit if that is our only recourse. Um and I don't think that you had that, I'm not sure. We weren't told that they did anyway. Um so who's responsible for the damage if you can't get the culprit? And um how can we, you know, catch them if there are no cameras? And if we should catch them, you know, what do we do? What do we do? So we would like, we are really asking for some type of netting. Um we were told that the deer could get caught in the netting.
And also I spoke to a nice lady last summer.
Oh, you're having.
That's uh spring. And they mentioned that trees won't be planted. But one of the issues, but we have issues with two type of golf balls, the pop flies and the line drives. So either way, you're kind of stuck. So trees would be nice, but you're not just gonna plant redwoods.
Yeah, I mean, they're gonna take time to grow.
Like if you drive there anytime during the day when it's nice up, it's not raining or anything, we don't um, we don't use our driver. So you'll see all ni- nice cars parked on the street because, again, uh three uh windshield's.
Yeah.
Two of them have to be replaced. One of them hasn't because it's my son's car.
Our son just hasn't gotten away.
But it's really getting.
And what, can I, I'm I'm trying to picture where your home is. What what hole is this?
So it's right where the opening is, so you, there are trees that go up, yes.
Off the sex?
They moved the hole before. They tried that.
Okay.
Uh moving the hole so that, because we couldn't imagine that golf balls were gonna get all the way over to our home. So.
Yeah.
We tried, they tried moving the the hole and that worked, uh that did improve it a little bit. But COVID was really bad because that was all that was open, you know, during it. And there were every, every person that never played golf.
Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely.
They hit balls you would not believe. I mean, when I say they are literally down our street, it it's, it was awful.
Yeah.
And so, you know, when you have to dodge golf balls in the summertime, it's dangerous. And we're not as, you know, spry as we used to be getting into the house. And so it's, it really is becoming a nuisance and a safety hazard, to be honest with you. So we just would like, you know, that to be looked at, um just so that we can see if we can do a net. There's, that's the huge opening right at the corner of our block. And we're right at thirty-two oh one, which is on the, on the right-hand side. I'm sorry?
I mean, it was something that was trees coming along.
Yeah, we're on the other side. That's our neighbors. They're right across. They're, they actually have a Bailey, Bailey um road address. So we're right on thirty-two oh one if you look on Google Maps. It's it's probably the old house, which had trees in front of it. And I'm sure that helped having all of those trees, but they were dying and they were falling and it was, it was a nuisance and they were ugly. Cut these trees down. And we were there, honestly, we were there six months. I was like, I know these trees were here before we bought this house, but, yeah, and we had to cut them.
And this is across the street. This isn't even on the.
Yeah, so right on the corner. That's us on the corner.
Yeah, that is really bad golf.
Yeah.
So you're right there on that corner?
Right where that opening is, right there.
Mm-hmm.
Um and I believe there probably were trees there at some point, but you know, like our trees were dying. I'm sure they had issues with theirs, but it's, it's bad. Well, some of them are so bad that they come over those trees, to be honest with you.
Wow.
I mean, it's a public course, so people who don't know how to pick, play golf go there. And I think it's really the hole. Well, you can come, you, feel free to come on over and get about twenty golf balls before you go golfing. Cause they're always in our yard. Our poor lawn guy, he picks them all up and he puts them under the tree in the yard. And, I mean, easily forty every time we, we um. Go on along.
Yeah.
So we're just asking for some assistance or some resolution or plan for a resolution because it's really, I don't wanna get hit by a golf ball. And that's what we're afraid of.
Alright, well.
That's it.
No, I appreciate you bringing this to us.
Yes.
And uh, Don, Nicole, you guys, if you can, just kind of work on something. I don't know what resolution we can come up with.
I think, no, that that is a tough, difficult location. It does look like there were trees there at one point planning to try to maintain balls on the course to the degree that they're capable of doing so. They've clearly been removed over time. Um we'll have to sit down and look at what options and if we can get your contact information, uh coordinate with you on what possible solutions would be feasible at that location um moving forward. So if we can just get your contact information tonight, Nicole and I will talk and then hopefully try to address this.
We do not want anyone getting hurt. And we don't want.
Right.
Because of the. Yeah, yeah, no.
Some of them come over. And they're like, sorry, which is, you know, I'm glad a lot of them apologized, but if it hits one of us when we're not looking.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for sitting through the whole meeting.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, good.
You can come and join Park and Rex. We uh play ball down at Municipal Park. We'd love to have you come on board. I had to get her before uh Mr. Evans, uh try to get you on historical stuff.
Yeah, we could use you on the historical commission.
I think you'll like Park and Rex. We have nice balls at Park and Rex.
We have events.
I'm in charge of sewer.
He is right. I'm telling you, somebody sort of told me that a few years ago.
It's definitely not a view thing.
Yeah.
They don't live on the golf course, so, so whatever we can do. Alright, thank you. Any other public comment? Tony, come on up.
Tony?
Two-five-one Loomis Avenue. Um a lot of people have been even asking me about that Route Thirty from CVS to Seltzer Avenue. Aqua left that in pretty well disarray. When are they gonna blacktop that?
None of the asphalt plants are open yet, so.
Don't they open March first?
Uh I, it's based on low temperatures, if I'm correct, right? So they, they'll have to.
They will be taking care of that?
That's a PNDOT thing, so.
Well, Aqua tore it up.
Right.
Oh, Pen, I'm sorry, Pennsylvania American?
But it's a PNDOT road.
They can just leave it like that?
If PNDOT allows it.
I would run them out of Callan.
Oh, wow.
Another thing, when it rained the other day, of course, all that mud came off that hill. How comes a retention pa- pond or retention burn wasn't put in place first instead of stripping that whole hill?
There was. There is, there was.
There was what?
A retention basin. There is a retention basin.
Going along the whole way or what?
Yes, sir. Gets inspected on a regular basis.
From uh where it begins and to the end?
Yes, sir.
Alright, thank you. All that mud came into the cricks and, well, you could see it coming down.
It it wasn't just from there, but they they do get inspected.
And you know, it gets in them storm drains. It just clogs them up. It, you're wasting your time. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
Any other public comment here in the township? Penny in Zoom? None of this time. Alright, well, before I adjourn or ask for adjournment, uh just wanted to wish everyone a happy Easter. Make sure you get out there on Saturday with the kids. All the Easter eggs. Twenty-six hundred of them. Please find them all, cause they start smelling after a while.
Find a golden egg.
Alright, entertain a motion to, uh, moved, then second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you.